Hi, this is Malika of Evanston Live TV. And we have with us Anya Tanya Vudi. Now, this woman, bad. Love her. Absolutely love her. She just stepped into the position of president of the school district 65. Congratulations, lady.
Thank you. I'm excited for what our board will be up to.
Yes, yes. Now, Anya, I know you as this, you are serious. You are a serious woman. Whenever you and I have met, we usually were meeting over serious topics. But you do not play. And you are very, very passionate, very, very passionate. And I love that about you. So tell us how this came about. I'm so happy for you because it is so deserving. And I feel confident. You know, I have children in District 65, but the children are our future. And I feel very, very
Yes, they are.
And it makes me feel good knowing that you're in this position. Because I know how you think. I know how you feel. I know how you care about things. You care about children. You're a mom yourself, highly educated. You, I mean, you're just bad girl all the way around. So just
I appreciate that.
Yes, yes. So tell us how this all happened. I think everybody was like, Anya Tanya Vudi, she's the president. I was like, really? What's going on?
Yeah, so it's, I think it's been three years since I was elected to the school board. And I was appointed to the school board about three and a half years ago. And I've been vice president for those three years. And typically, we have two-year kind of terms, but it's rather informal. It's based on kind of what the needs are at the moment. And Sunny Cartha was president. I was vice president. And we functioned as a leadership team. And she was a fantastic school board president during many, many unprecedented times. And it was, it was a good time for us to transition. And the, the president of the school board role is incredibly, it's high visibility and it's time consuming. And so I appreciate so much all of the work that we were able to do together. And I will miss working with Sunny as a leadership team. But I'm excited to step into the president role. And I'm super excited also to be stepping into the role with Biz Lindsay Ryan as my vice president. And we too will be working as a collaborative team. And, and I think that our district is in great hands with us as a leadership team, with an incredible board that we're working with. We're so privileged to have a great coalition of people with big hearts, with multiple perspectives and drive to do important work for marginalized children and everyone. And one of the things that we are clear about is that the design for oppression in this country was built from the root of anti-blackness. And if we can figure out how to untangle what anti-blackness looks like in the way institutions have been built, including the institution of schooling, then we can figure out how to untangle lots of different forms of oppression. And so I feel really good about this board's commitment to that and our leadership team. And I'm incredibly excited. We have a new superintendent coming in. I've been talking with him for a while. I think last time you and I spoke, I alluded to his, his, his leadership. Dr. Devon Horton is going to be starting on June 18th. And he's bringing an incredible vision for leadership. And he is absolutely the person to execute the vision that we are setting or have set for the district as a board. Starting with, I don't know if you're aware, there's a task force that's happening right now. Were you aware of the task force? The District 65 reopening schools task force?
I am not aware of the task force.
Okay. There's upwards of 60 people, stakeholders from all across our community, who are collaborating together with the leadership of Dr. Horton to think through several different scenarios for how we may open schools in the fall in a way that is centered around doing so in a way that focuses on accelerating the learning for Black and Latinx students and thinking holistically about children's learning and their wellness. And one of the things that we know is the best way for institutions to serve people is for the people that they need to serve well to have a voice. And one of the reasons our institutions locally have and nationally and globally have not served marginalized voices well is because we have not been invited to speak to what our needs are. We know our needs and we know we have solutions and ideas about how to address our needs. But that has to welcome to the table. And what we've seen nationwide in the uprisings that we've seen is frustration at not having our humanity recognized. So having transparency and inclusivity in systems is a gesture in itself towards racial equity. And this task force is sent, it's a community gathering centered around racial equity and how we as a school district, this institution that belongs to all of us. It's ours. And it belongs to us and we're going to get to help shape what the vision will be. It's an advisory task force. So the ultimate decision makers and builders of what comes out of that task force will be the superintendent and his cabinet. But it's our voice that will contribute to and influence what that looks like and, and help to give shape to how they bring their skills to form. So I'm really, I'm really excited right now.
Have you found with the task force that everybody's pretty much on the same page? I mean, that's a lot of people, you said 60, right?
Yes, it is. And you know,
Is everybody on the same
It's a large number. Well, and one of the reasons in the past that the excuses have been given for why we don't include more stakeholder impact is that it gets unwieldy. But there are processes and methodologies that can be used in order to get valuable information, even when, when we have a diverse set of perspectives or lots of different voices. And while I am not a member of the task force, we do have board representation on the task force. Sergio Hernandez and Joey Halpern are board representatives on the task force. And there are members from lots of different community organizations, big and small, members from healthcare, District 202, the city, et cetera. In terms of are people all on the same page? I think, you know, everyone's got to be on the same page regarding the purpose. The purpose and the vision for the task force is set. I hope that there are a variety of voices, honestly. I mean, it would not be terribly useful if everyone comes in and has the exact same idea. The value really comes from folks having a variety of different perspectives and expertise to offer. And I believe that the goal, from my understanding, the goal is to allow people to be experts in the area that they're experts. So encouraging folks to have a voice and to bring it to the fore, particularly in the areas where they have specialized knowledge so that we have, the entire community can benefit.
Okay, okay. Now, you and Sunny, together, you, the board, you all had some, you all had made some progress. But I think you, last time you and I had talked, our last interview, you were expressing not enough, there's not enough coverage of the positive in the progress that has been made in District 65. So if you want to go over, you know, some of the victories, the wins, and then, you know, and then the challenges that we, we still face with District 65?
Yeah, I'm happy to do that. And also Sunny made a really moving speech at the reorganization meeting that we just had this past Monday. And she listed many of our accomplishments over the last three years. So I will try to be as thorough, but I may not be. So I also encourage folks to check out that video and, and to listen to her speech. One of the things in the last three years that we had, that happened was the entire district went through a racial equity audit. And we adopted many of the recommendations from that audit, including ensuring that every staff member and every educator in our district completed a racial equity training. And the racial equity training that has been the most common one completed is Beyond Diversity through Pacific Education Group, though many of our educators have also taken seed in addition to making that available to our entire staffing community. And we also have requested that that be required of our subcontractors as well, our bus drivers, our substitute teachers, et cetera. So that it's a broad cultural understanding in our district that racial equity is a priority and that there's systematic responsibility for racial equity, not individual responsibility. So that was a tremendous accomplishment that took lots of work from our board, work within the institution, work with our bargaining bodies, work with our community as well. And those resources have been opened up to our community so that parents and community members can also take those trainings and understand the priorities that they'll see in our local schools. And hopefully be a gesture towards harm reduction roundly so that roundly as a community, we can understand that Black and Brown children and families have not been having the same experience. Our systems have not been giving us the same treatment. And we have not been having the same outcomes, but we are deserving of that. And that is something that is important that our entire community understand and accept and start thinking about how to change. So I think that's an incredible accomplishment to introduce that training and that discussion to our community, to our schools, to our administrators, and our entire board. We do, we don't ask folks to do work that we're not willing to do. So yeah, introducing those trainings. We've had some curricular reviews, some changes in traditions that have been harmful. That hasn't necessarily been a board change, but it's an institution change. So the elimination of Pioneer Days that really celebrated white supremacist colonial perspective about expansion west and did not include the perspective of Indigenous people or other marginalized people. And that was an important change.
Did you all get any pushback on that?
I'm sorry, say that again?
Did we push back on getting rid of Pioneer Day?
There were some folks who were uncomfortable. They felt like it was a fun tradition. But what was really important was that people have the context about how fun traditions for some people also includes a certain erasure of the experience of other people. And that it's not okay for us to continue erasing some people and perpetuating false, false history. And that false history leads to the ability to continue to perpetuate harm as if Black and Brown people and our experiences are not here and are not felt. And so there's definitely a goal to have more complete and more accurate and less harmful curricular content. And that's also expressed in the Black Lives Matter Week of Action at schools that have been adopted for the last two years. And in this last year, the LGBTQ plus Equity Week, really encouraging folks to think about where our history is incomplete with marginalized voices and looking to how do we correct that in order to be more inclusive? Because those folks are among us and they are hurt when we, and we are hurt when stories, our stories are left out and they're not told. And everyone's hurt by continuing to grow up with a knowledge of history that really is mythical. It's not real. And when we have more real understanding of our history, then we have more of, we have more agency around how we create and change the conditions now to make them more humane and more inclusive. And we also have an understanding of some of the other experiences that we see, such as people being executed by an institution that's meant to protect and serve and communities rising up out of frustration. As Dr. King said, you know, that's, that's a, that's a communication from the unheard. And if we have a mythical belief that somehow everyone has been having a wonderful experience and have, have been getting resources equally and been treated similarly, then we may not understand why a community rises up in grief and in rage. But if we have an accurate understanding of what has occurred and what has been endured and what has been tolerated in silence, then we may understand the grief and the rage when we see it.
Yes, yes, yes. Well, thank you all for all the work that you've put in to change things. I didn't, I didn't know you all had gotten rid of Pioneer Day. I didn't know that. That was new, definitely.
Yeah. And we've also taken a very close look at our ACC program and tried to deconstruct how we can benefit from the knowledge and the wisdom that exists in that curricular content and the beautiful outcomes that that program produces for Black children.
People speak very, very highly of the ACC program. And, but yet, there's been some struggles, some challenges with it and trying to get rid of the program. And I'm like, why would you get rid of that program when it's, when it's working? So what's, what's been the challenge with that?
Well, part of the reason we know it's working, Malika, is because this board has been curious to hear about the program, to shine light on it, to have the outcomes of the program shared publicly and to discuss it. If something is neglected, not noticed, not paid attention to, then it may seem insignificant. And so one of the concerns that I had when I first came to the board was that I would constantly hear talk about how the program was under-enrolled and how the program was not roundly considered successful. However, my response to that, based on what I know of patterns and how, and patterns of anti-blackness is that oftentimes we are given things and then they're underfunded and neglected when it becomes ours. And so it felt to me like ACC was something that was given to the Black community, but then it was paid no attention to. It wasn't given proper staffing at central office. And it was supposed to be a pilot. It was never expanded. So that was definitely a concern of mine. Can't criticize something that hasn't been invested in. You have to invest in it first. So that's part of the reason why we asked for ACC to be brought to the board level and to hear the presentations. And when we did hear the presentation and when we saw the data, the ACC program had some Black students outperforming Black students on average in the entire district, that program alone. And that's an important story for us to tell about the program, but also for, for the district, what can we learn? How, how do we expand our wins and, and provide them that knowledge and that wisdom elsewhere?
I, I, the whole, the, the lack of funding, whenever there's a Black agenda, a, a Black idea that's really going to feed and help build and strengthen any sort of Black agenda. Funding is always a frickin' issue when it wasn't an issue anywhere else. But now all of a sudden, the city is, you know, everybody's broke. Like, there's not a dime left. How do you, how do you combat that when that conversation comes up?
Well, I think it's really important for us to remember that we truly do all belong to each other. And we are a, humans are social creatures and we need each other. And we are connected with one another by the, the institutions that we've invested in with our tax dollars, right? These, these entities are meant to serve all of us. And when they're not serving some of us well, they're not serving any of us well. And I think that we really need to tap into our humanity and tap into the inhumanity of ignoring people and their suffering. So
Well, you know, now the, the new argument is going to be, well, as far as children and their education, well, we're getting through COVID-19 now. So we don't know what's going to happen with the kids. Are they going back to school? Are they going to stay at home for the first quarter or semester? We, we just can't put any of the budget into these other programs that assist a Black agenda. That's, that's the new argument now.
I think, yeah, I think it's, I guess, so what I was getting at is I, I'm reluctant to suggest that racial equity is a Black agenda. I think that racial equity should be everybody's agenda because we are all connected. And it, it really is a question of everyone's humanity. If we are willing to watch other people suffer, when it can be addressed and to choose not to address it for our own comfort, I question what that does to people's hearts, their souls, their minds. And one of the, was because I was not willing to put my children in a situation where we were only going to advocate for them. I insisted that if we're going to stay in our community and our children are going to go to our public schools, that we are going to advocate for every single child. And I want to raise my children with the value of caring for everyone. Not just your friends, not just your neighbors, not just people who look like you or don't look like you. We're going to raise you to value everyone's humanity and we're going to model that as the adults in this household. So that, that's why I'm here. And I, and I challenge anyone who wants to suggest that it's, that it is not wise for our, for us to spend our financial capital, social capital, et cetera, to serve people who have been marginalized or who have been harmed. And, and those are the values of the superintendent that are, that we, we as a board hired with the input of our community. And we had the most community input that that particular search firm has ever seen.
Wow.
For a superintendent process. And that's all they do. This is all they do. And we had the most community engagement that they've ever seen. And so Dr. Horton is the superintendent that is going to drive home the vision that our community had and that we as a board reflected in that hiring process. And Leslie Williams said once, and I agree, that a budget is a moral document.
That's deep. The budget is a moral document. I like that.
And Dr., Dr. Horton talks a lot about you move what you measure. So it is our job to measure the things that matter to us and that is what we are going to move.
All right. See, I, I feel, I feel really good. I feel really, really good. We about to see the earth move. I can feel it. So are there any other challenges coming up where the community really needs to understand and know where we can be of support to the board in making certain changes? You know, I mean, are there challenges where it feels like you're boxing a mountain? You know, and, and really need the community to rally around you? Because sometimes we don't always know, you know, all of what you all are facing and dealing with.
Yeah, I mean, I think that one of the things that's really important for our community to do is to be clear about what our values are and how we are willing to stand for them. And being clear and steadfast in them. And I say that because I also, I'm excited for what's ahead, but I am also not naive. I understand that as a Black woman with strong opinions, that in many ways that could make me a target. And there are very common tropes that folks rely on to try to undermine Black people in leadership. And I think that that's also, you know, a potential risk of how folks will approach our new superintendent. And if we're steadfast in our values, then we'll be able to see through misinformation and we'll be able to, I think, speak clearly about what we stand for. I really do believe that a majority of our community is on the right side of history. But we can't just be on the right side of history in our minds and our hearts. We gotta be on the right side of history in our feet too. We have to move. We have to act. We have to link arms. We have to stand tall. We, we have to do that part of this work together too. So I think that that's something important that we'll need to take on. There's a number of priorities. Our work is not done. While we've adopted trainings on culturally relevant and culturally responsive curriculum, curricular content, we're still strengthening that. One of the reports that we saw in May that was heartbreaking to me and is an area that I think parents will definitely need to continue to advocate and inform themselves and connect with each other about and systematically that we have the responsibility to correct is the report looking at our special education services. the report looking at our special education services. Um, for, it's been three years that I've been asking for a racially disaggregated special education outcome. But we finally got the report in May and it was, it was difficult. It was really difficult to.
Do, is a good portion, a good number of those kids, do they even belong in, in a special ed? I've, I've often wondered that.
When you say those kids, you mean a good portion of children who are disabled? Um, or identified as disabled?
Um, it just seems, when I was growing up, special ed meant children who were disabled. It just seems like now, um, I mean, kids who aren't disabled or kids with special needs. It, it just seems like the number is just growing and growing and growing. And I just often wondered if, if, if all of those children actually belong in that, in that program.
Well, one of the things that the report identified was the disproportionality in representation of black children as um, emotionally disabled, which is a more subjective measurement. Um, and racism can easily play a part in that. Um, as well as um, having cognitive delays or having learning disabilities. And an overrepresentation of our Latinx children as having speech impairments. Um, which could also be racism related to language of origin or native language spoken. Um, whenever we see, you know, a racial disproportionality of something, we need to, eh, we need to ask why. Um, so if we make up, if, if black folks and Latinx folks make up forty percent of the student population, then those numbers should be forty percent, right? Not, not, um, like forty percent of the um, individuals diagnosed with those disabilities. Not sixty percent, eighty percent, et cetera. Um, so there were some over identification. In terms of other um, disability identifications, I think, you know, we know more about um, neurotypical development and atypical neural development now than, than um, we did maybe twenty, thirty years ago. So it's not um, surprising that we would have different diagnoses available. What was surprising to me about the report was not um, the raw numbers of, of children who have been identified um, with disabilities and, and the IEPs associated with such. What was concerning to me and heartbreaking to me was the disproportionality, racial disproportionality of some of those identifications. Um, implying that some children are being over identified. But also the report had um, a slide that showed that um, white children with IEPs who take the MAP assessment had MAP outcomes that were greater than black gen, gen ed students and almost greater than Latinx gen ed students. Um, and, and much, much greater than black and Latinx students with IEPs. And that represents to me, um, um, and undereducation of black and Latinx students in general education and in special education. And the systematically neglecting the potential and the aptitude that all of our children bring each day and that every parent sends their children to school with each day, the hope and the love that we send our children to school with each day and systematically undereducating them is not something that we can allow to continue to happen. Um.
Hmm, hmm, yeah, I, I've, I've often wondered what those numbers look like because I've, I've seen, you know, schools make these recommendations that a, a black student should be in, you know, special ed, special needs. And I'm, and there was absolutely no reason for that because they had a few bad days at school. You know, I didn't understand that at all. I didn't understand that.
So one of the um, important opportunities is that the um, Romy DeChristophero, the Assistant Superintendent of Special Services, prepared the report and presented it along with a number of recommendations. And some of those recommendations were around looking at um, how IEP meetings go. And looking at how those get adjusted and how um, folks who are organizing those meetings and doing the assessments also take racial equity training and racial equity training specific to special education. So that they can think differently about how systems may be over identifying some children um, based on subjective information or underservicing people based on um, the data that we have for those children. Everyone deserves to have, have their needs met.
There, there are a couple kids who, who needed to have their needs met. They, they had, I felt they had some special needs issues. Um, and I felt like the, this particular school they're going to um, just kept passing them along to the next grade, to the next grade, you know, graduated, I'm gonna, I'm just like, you did not prepare this child with these needs. You know, you're pushing them off into high school and, and I just don't think that they were prepared. Whereas this brilliant student over here, you were ready to just, you know, lock this one up somewhere. You know, I, I just, I didn't understand it. I didn't understand it at all. I was like, what are you all basing this on? How are you measuring who goes where? It, it just didn't make sense to me.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there is definitely, the report indicated that there is definitely room for growth and improvement. Another area that was, another recommendation that I thought was exciting um, is supporting more co-teaching and providing the um, the professional development and support to help our educators uh, co-teach more often so that children can be in the least restrictive environment and included in their grade level classrooms. And that inclusion can be there for all children to get rigorous instruction with their peers. Um, and another one of the recommendations was to allow people to stay at their homeschool to receive um, the services that they are owed and that they are, they deserve to be able to receive. Because we had some children who had to go to one school for kindergarten through second grade and then switch and go to another school for three, third through fifth grade. Um, and so we were taking students who already were at risk of being marginalized and asking them to go to, to separate their schooling experience and not have that consistency. So by streamlining, streamline, streamlining our programs to allow people to stay at their neighborhood schools as well as increasing the quality and the amount of co-teaching so that there's more inclusion. That's going to support um, all of our children and having a better uh, special education experience. But specifically that those improvements are also gonna be tailored to meet the needs of our most marginalized students who are having um, the least pleasant and the least effective experience right now in our special services. And that's, that's good stuff to hear.
That's, that's good stuff. Uh, what do you see happening with COVID nineteen? I know this, nobody was prepared for where we are right now. Um, we've never experienced it ever in our lifetime, any of us. Um, so wh- what do you think is going to happen come September?
Well, the task force will bring us those recommendations. Um, and at the organization reorganization meeting that we had on Monday, Dr. Horton did um, share a little bit about the task force and the different scenarios that they will be um, reviewing. And one of the things he highlighted is that it could be multiple scenarios. So it could be, right, the year may have some hybrid schooling where some children are at home, or where children are at home for part of the day, in the building, another part of the day. Um, there may be a time where it's necessary to be in remote learning and to um, shelter in place as we had to do in the spring. And there may be hopefully a time where we can be back in the building together and have schedules that are more similar to what we have seen before. And the idea is that the task force think through all of those scenarios and what would be the best way to utilize them. Um, so that it's oriented towards a positive learning experience for those who may have the, the most potential to, to be marginalized. Um, so I think that, you know, it's, it's, it would be lovely to say, this is what we know we're gonna do. But I don't think we know what next month is gonna look like necessarily. Hopefully, you know, the incidences of COVID start to decrease. Hopefully, we see some treatment and a vaccine, you know, sometime in the near future. But um, it's, much of it is out of our hands. And so I think, you know, it's wise for us to plan for lots of different scenarios. My son actually is meant to start kindergarten in the fall. And every day we do a little morning routine. We talk about our feelings. And every day he says that he's happy because he can't wait for kindergarten. And so we had to have a conversation and I had to tell him, you know, kindergarten may not look like for you the way it did for your sister. And it's good for you to continue being excited and happy. And you're gonna have, you're, you're gonna do amazingly, but it, it may look different. And we just have to roll with it.
He's looking forward to pretty much his first day of real school. Oh.
Yeah, and he had his last day of preschool and he was bummed about that because that had to be remote. Um, but, you know.
Um, and Anya, before I let you go, I know I keep saying I'm gonna make these interviews short, less than thirty minutes, I swear. But the topic is always so intriguing. I'm like, I want more information. Give me more, give me more, give me more. Um, so you know, I've been working on this, this bill, uh, HB four nine five four. And um, uh, House Representative Ford uh, let me know that, you know, they'll be back at the Capitol in Springfield come November. And uh, you know, I told him, you know, I've been pushing, still pushing and encouraging people to call their house representatives to support this bill. Uh, and the bill is Black History Expansion. I'm warning the school system, the entire state of Illinois to teach the true history of black people pre enslavement, because our history did not start with slavery. To tell the truth of who we were prior to becoming enslaved and then include, include us in everything from cover to cover. I mean, we are part of this history. We shouldn't just be two pages in the history book. Um, and I, I truly believe, like you said, it's gonna help everyone. This, you know, the black agenda is an everyone agenda. Cause if you're helping the black community, you're helping everybody. You're helping to build an overall better community if everybody is receiving what they're supposed to be receiving. So I truly believe if all the other children really learn who black children are, is gonna improve the race relations. There's gonna be a respect level there. It's just gonna be an appreciation. And then black children in turn, of course, you know, they're gonna have more self-knowledge, self-worth, self-value, uh, race identity, who they really are. So what, you know, and of course, we received opposition. To this bill. We're still receiving opposition to this bill. We're receiving a lot of support, but we are receiving those who are determined to kill this bill. What, what are your thoughts on that, President?
Well, one, I think it's really important that we give name to folks who are opposing. Um, us having our humanity fully recognized. Cause I think it's important for us to recognize our heroes, but also our enemies too. So I'd be curious to hear the name of the individuals or individual who is opposing um, giving children access to more full and complete and more accurate historical knowledge. Um, I've, for a long time, felt very connected with my African heritage. And I traveled to Senegal, West Africa in two thousand and three. Um, and it had a tremendous impact on who I am and how I raised my children and how I moved through the world. Um, but even as probably as early as two years ago, I struggled to identify that I am also an indigenous person. I'm not indigenous to this land, but my heritage is indigenous to Africa. And to understand the wisdom that has been passed on through generations to me, to ensure our survival, the wisdom that we have as black people and in black culture and our, the vernacular we use, the beliefs that, and values that we lean on. Those are values that come from our indigenous heritage and they've allowed us to survive. And, you know, we are the survivors of attempted genocide. To remove uh, young people, to remove people from their culture and their language, to steal children and indoctrinate them and remove them from their origins is an act of genocide. Um, and we've been able to survive because of the values that have persisted through that. Those are incredible values. And I think we would carry ourselves differently, or for ourselves, connect with each other differently with that knowledge. Um, we'd be able to, more equipped to resist anti-blackness in terms of cultural standards, um, systems, values, et cetera, with more complete and accurate knowledge of our history. So I think that that would be amazing. And that is part of the institutional repair that we are due. Um, and having education systems care about racial equity is an act of repair. Um, it is a, a gesture of reparation. And we are, we are do that. We've been here. We have been contributing. And it is compulsory and legally required that we participate in this system. It is compulsory that we pay taxes, whether it's via the rent that we pay or the property taxes that we mail in to the clerk office. But either way, these are institutions that belong to us and that we've been contributing to for a very long time that have not served us adequately. And it's an act of repair to stop denying the ways that that system has continued to, to fail us. And one of those ways is through inaccurate and incomplete curriculum. And I, I think when folks imply that there's not enough time or money to do something institutionally, oftentimes it's a lack of imagination. Oftentimes, it's a lack of imagination. If if we really want something done, we can put our time and energy into that and create a pathway to do it. And it has been done, it's been done many, many times before. And it's time for institutions to pause and notice our humanity and. Act like they care. And and that would be an act of care to say it is important that we get accurate history. It's important that we stop perpetuating information that attempts to make black people feel small. And attempts to perpetuate that belief in other people.
Right, right.
Yeah, so I I appreciate that and I I wanna know who are champions and I wanna know. Who who are who are the people who are in the way of that as well. And, you know, it's something that we've been talking about in District sixty five for a long time. How to have more holistic um curricular content for for all of our children. If we truly want anti-racist schools, we have to interrogate what the curriculum content looks like in order to make that happen. But we can't simply say, oh, well, it's not racist. Not racist is not adequate, we need to be against racism. And I spoke a little bit about this in my remarks after I was elected president. Do you mind if I read some of it?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay, so I put um. While I grieve the error of this country and the conscience of everyone who has been and continues to be complicit in its genocide. Of the indigenous and kidnapped African captives who have built it. And whose descendants still reside. I grieve yet, still I rise. Still, we are here. I speak up and I stand up because we deserve also to be served and seen. We are not diversity accessories and our suffering is not background noise. And I'll read an excerpt here from Maya Angelou's Still I Rise. Leaving behind nights of terror and fear, I rise. Into a daybreak that is wondrously clear, I rise. Bringing the gifts that my ancestors gave, I am the dream and the hope of the slave. I rise, I rise, I rise.
Beautiful, oh, that piece always gives me chills, it just sends chills up my spine. Thank you so much, Anya, thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you for keeping our, for being curious and connected and keeping our community informed.
Girl, I I do my best, I do my best, but thank you for all of your work, girl, you just, you have no idea. I feel, like I said at the beginning, I feel very good with you stepping into that position because I know who you are. And it's very real to your core. This, this is what you were meant to do. And you just, girl, you just walk right into it, so thank you. And of course, feel free, come back to Evanston Live TV. You have any announcements, anything you need the community to get behind or to just simply understand. Um, about things that are going on, because sometimes we don't always get the information right, you know? So we don't know all of what you all are facing, what you're battling, what you're going through, what you're trying to push, what you're trying to get rid of. So yeah, feel free to to keep us informed here. Um, as another outlet to to keep the community informed. And congratulations to you, Anya.
Thank you.
So deserving, you were very hard, lady.
Thank you, um, you know, this is a position to serve our community. So I want our community to know that I'm here and to know how to reach out if if they need support, help or listening here. So I appreciate that. There's one other thing that I could sh- if I could share with you and you can decide how you wanted to edit in or not.
Okay.
Um, I, one of the other successes that we've had as a district is um the development of the Black Student Success Department. And um, the person who, La- Dr. Latasha Green, who was the Executive Director of Black Student Success. She's actually been promoted to Deputy Superintendent. So Black Student Success will be a focus from our second, our first in command and our second in command. And a new model of instructional coaching has been rolled out. And every school will have an instructional coach in the building. Which brings instructional support directly available to everyone. In their buildings and as a former educator, I personally think it's so important to have supports available. Um, I know what it's like to educate in a building that doesn't have supports and it's very difficult. So we have this, um, the Black Student Success Department doesn't exist currently anymore. But we have the knowledge and the wisdom from that department supporting um content. Um, coaches and instructional coaches. And I think that's something that folks may be curious about and may not understand. But I wanted to make sure people know that that wisdom didn't just disappear.
All right, well, that's good to know, that is good to know. And that is something to be proud of, I don't think we hear enough about the progress. Uh, the District sixty five is making, we we always hear the the dark and gloomy side of things that are going on, the challenges. But uh, we, it feels good to know the progress that's being made, so thank you so much.
Thank you, Malika, you take care.
All right, you too, lady, thank you, thank you. Bye bye. Okay, you all, that was Anya Tanya Booty, she is the new president of District sixty five, the board. She's an awesome woman, as you can tell, she knows her stuff, she knows her stuff. And I tell you, I feel good about Anya because I know her outside of her, you know, being on the board. And it is her passion, it is her passion, this is, she was born to do this, this is her, to her core, this is her. So you guys, thank you so much for um tuning in today. Be sure to stay tuned because we have more incredible people coming up right here on Evanston Live TV. People just doing awesome things in this community. Stay engaged, stay aware, stay conscious. Be careful out there, we're we're in some interesting times, all right? You guys, thank you and have a great day, bye bye.